Welcome, everyone. I'll now call the meeting to order, and Commissioner McKelvey Day will lead us in the pledge.
My pledge relates to the United States of America, to the people who live in cities, to the citizens of Canada, to the citizens of the United States of America, to the citizens of the United States of America, to the citizens of the United States of America.
Thank you. Can we have a roll call? Commissioner Donahue.
Present.
Commissioner McKelvey Day.
Here.
Commissioner Ramos.
Here.
Vice Chair Meeks.
Visiting President.
Chair Percy Gonzalez.
Present.
And we have Commissioners Monso and Purnell absent. All right. We'll welcome everyone and have staff introductions. Ira Robles, Administrative aide.
Lisa Brinton, Community Development Director.
Courtney Grossman, Planning.
Sean Morrison, Planning. And Brett Leonard, Planning.
All right. We want to open it up for public comments. Are there any comments from the public regarding items that are not on today's agenda? Or any emails we've received? None? Okay, thank you. We'll move on to approval of the minutes from the April 3 meeting. Are there any questions or comments from the Commissioners regarding the minutes from last meeting? Commissioner Donahue.
No.
Commissioner Meeks.
I just want to say I think the Vice Chair did a great job.
Commissioner McKelvey Day.
No.
Commissioner Ramos.
No.
And I have no questions. Is there a motion to approve and a second?
So moved. Second.
With a motion from Commissioner Donahue and a second from Commissioner Meeks, could we have a roll call vote? Commissioner Donahue.
Aye.
Commissioner McKelvey Day.
Aye.
Commissioner Ramos.
Yes.
Vice Chair Meeks.
Yes.
Chair Percy Gonzalez.
Yes.
All right, looks like we have no considerations to cover, and so we can move on to administrative reports. Senior Planner Jonathan Moore will present a PowerPoint on the general plan update. And just to clarify, there's no decision-making for the Commission today. This is an update informational, sort of a study session?
Yep, study session.
Great.
Great. Thank you for this opportunity this afternoon. It's great to be moving into some policy discussion and beyond just the general process of the general plan update, which, for some of the new folks, we've been working on this since 2021 and then parts of it even before then, so it's a long time in the works. Excited to be having a notion of the finish line in sight. So we're starting these study sessions to bring the Planning Commission and City Council, other bodies along with us on this process, so you're not just reviewing something when the draft comes across your table. We want to especially give you a chance to shape policy before we reach that formal public review draft process. And we're starting with the land use and circulation policies and elements because of how important those are in the general plan process and especially for the Planning Commission and your duties. They're also just kind of closely related as topics, you know, where businesses and housing are located, influence how people travel, how they get along, what options they have, and streets, highways, bike lanes, et cetera. They're not only connect destinations, but how they're designed, how they're shaped. They also impact how our places feel and how people experience those places. So in this presentation, I'll review some of the recurring themes we've heard through our community engagement efforts, particularly the results of some recent land use community engagement, some of the legal contexts that has shifted in the general plan world since the 2002 general plan, and our draft goals for these elements. And you've probably seen a version of this slide before, so we did, in our land use engagement early on in the process and throughout, we've heard a lot of things about the need for more housing, for more mixed-use development, places for people to start businesses, family-friendly entertainment and places to go, additional park and recreation space. So with this general plan update, we're proposing land use designations, which we're calling place types, which often focus on place-making instead of more traditional, just use-based designations. These respond to these community identified needs by increasing flexibility to make the most of our limited infill opportunities and land, and with most of the designations therein seeing increased flexibility, increased density, height, or allowed uses. And so much of the general plan process is about a balancing act between the future and protecting what we have. And we are only proposing these shifts because we think that our existing land uses will have an increasingly difficult time meeting these community identified needs as we go One of the biggest differences between the current and proposed land use designations is the number of mixed-use and special designation. So we only have one mixed-use land use and zoning designation, and the draft place types propose three, as well as special designations for all the downtown and the Alisal marketplace. And the land use engagement I'm about to discuss is due to council request following the last round of the proposed SB 2 rezoning, which if you remember were some of the marketplace and some of the shopping centers, they were proposed to be rezoned ahead of the general plan update to a mixed-use designation. Some controversy around this and challenges, and some of that kind of arose from us just having this one current designation that didn't even meet quite what we were thinking in the proposed place type in the future, but was the best we have currently. So we found that sometimes, and this was a square peg in a round hole, but the place types are designed to be, one, present more options and to respect some existing context while increasing flexibility to try to minimize some of that friction between what's there now and what could occur in the future. And we're also trying to set the stage for a zoning code update that makes that document something that allows more opportunities and is easier for the public to understand, for staff and the Planning Commission to use. This is kind of the foundation of that process. As you go back just one second, whenever we're talking about major changes, though, we're still talking about the possibility of creating some non-conforming uses. Minimum conflict does not always mean none, and following council's request, staff identifies some of the areas where there still might be the most potential changes from land use designations to place types. These include the marketplace, some of our corridors, like East Alisal Market, Downtown. And staff did additional analysis, and in these areas, we sent out over 1,300 postcards to property owners and businesses. We also specifically looked for businesses that might become non-conforming and sent 100 letters to those. And these were followed up by direct canvassing, and everything included invitation to attend one of three virtual information sessions held on consecutive days, or had one at 7:00 AM, noon, and in the evening as well. We had 40 seats who would attend those, and staff responded to over 30 calls in that time. And I know calls have still been trickling in. At least still people calling and asking about this stuff. Some of the biggest concerns we heard were if the changes would directly force anyone to move, no. If we were going to be doing eminent domain, no. So it was really a lot of fear about forced changes, whereas really this is about opportunities for the future. We also talked a lot about our current non-conforming use policies and concerns people had about those, and particularly those areas where the time, where if something burnt down, limitations on rebuilding, something that was non-conforming. If a tenant or something moved out and the use stopped, time limits on restarting that use, and the inability to expand their business. We did also hear some positive comments on increased flexibility and possibilities, so there was some excitement as well. In our current zoning code, non-conforming uses, you can continue to operate unless the property owner decides to change the use, or if the use stops for more than 180 days. Even in the existing code, there is latitude to extend that. You can't expand the non-conforming use, and if, basically if the property experiences a disaster such as a fire that destroys more than 50% of it, it can't rebuild. So we're currently in the process of considering some updates to these regulations even as we work on the general plan to make this more flexible. We still have to get the details ironed out, but some of those might be doing away with that time limit on resuming use, some flexibility in expanding and the ability to rebuild. But we'll have more on that as it comes along. But the intent is to have those in place by the time we come forward with the general plan update, so there is less concern about those non-conforming uses going forward. And again, the draft place types are supposed to be more context-sensitive and to create less non-conforming uses while allowing new opportunities. So we have three broad goals for the land use infrastructure element. One is kind of focused on what we've been talking about, supporting a balanced, diverse, equitable land use pattern, providing a wide range of jobs, housing, recreation, and services. So that's finding that balance between all those things. Policies and actions in that promote mixed use, new housing, coordinating investment on underserved corridors, economic development through land use. They look at our future growth areas, target areas, things like that. Goal two is about our infrastructure, ensuring that meets community needs. It's a pretty broad-based one, but it's about maintaining and making sure that the infrastructure's in place to support those land uses. And goal three is on the municipal airport, mostly carried over from the existing general plan, but the airport is undergoing its own master plan process, so we wanted to support that effort and encourage new thinking around what our airport can be. Now, we're going to shift gears and talk about circulation, starting with some of the things we've heard in our engagement efforts on that. A lot of these probably are familiar to you. Need for road and sidewalk maintenance, repair, safety, traffic congestion. We've also heard that congestion is an issue, but if we want people to use more bike facilities, walking, the bus, we need to make it more convenient and safer to actually pick these as an alternative. And circulation and freight movement is a concern, particularly around Abbott Street and access to 101. And a little background on what the circulation element actually does. So according to state law, the circulation element must show major transportation routes and facilities, must plan for a multimodal network, and correlate directly to the land use element, as well as containing policies. It also defines overweight classifications, where they go and what they could look like. And going back to intersection between land use and transportation, our current classifications, which are the diagram on the top, don't really show potential surrounding land uses or many details outside of lane width. And I'm sure there's some thought about these things, but we'd like to make some of these connections and opportunities more visually apparent in the update, not to lock in final designs, which is to show a broader range of possibilities. There have been, in particular, a lot of changes to state law regarding transportation planning since 2002. The Complete Streets Act of 2008 requires cities to modify their circulation elements to plan for a balanced transportation system that meets the need of all users. SB 743 is another big one. It changed the basis for determining significant environmental impacts under CEQA, from delaying congestion or level of service to vehicle mile travel, or how far those trips are taken from that use. These changes really aim to improve community health and sustainability, reduce emissions by making it easier to use transit, to walk, to bike. Along with the general plan, the city will updating its VMT policy. We have an interim VMT policy, and eventually the traffic fee ordinance. And these are critical in implementing the circulation element. Salinas is a growing city, so mitigating VMT and congestion will continue to be challenging, especially with an anticipated build-out of those future growth areas, North of Piranda and other commercial and industrial areas. These laws, particularly SB 743, means rethinking our future network from what was proposed in 2002. Things like the western-eastern bypasses are financially and sustainably infeasible as the increase in VMT from those projects would make mitigation extremely expensive, not to mention construction costs, additional real and political costs in terms of land acquisition, ag mitigation, and working with the various stakeholders to make that happen. Not including them in the general plan will lessen environmental harm, reduce the number of new roads that we have to maintain in the future and repair in the future. And the Bernal and Constitution extensions through Car Lake in the center of the map are also likely infeasible for similar reasons. They're inside city limits, but they're also on a flood plain, and which would increase other costs for construction mitigation. And the steering committee, I know in particular we want to still include a Constitution extension in some manner. Since we last met with that group, we've examined it further with the senior engineer, with the transportation consultants, and now unfortunately we've come to the conclusion that it's not really feasible. One aspect is that Kern Street, where that Constitution extension would tie in, is itself very limited, so it's really hard to even increase capacity when you're tying into that particular road segment. So the best bet for connectivity through Car Lake at this time is through active transportation Before I skip on, one project from 2002 plan that may have new life is a potential new interchange, 101 at Harris Road. That looked kind of dead in the waterfall in time, but it recently has come back around. That would help some of those access issues in the industrial areas near Abbott and 101 Using our land use build-out estimates, the consultant team has projected our future vehicle mile travel impacts per capita. And looking at the residential numbers as an example, the land use changes, the place types, help keep our per capita VMT at roughly present-day levels versus what was projected under current build-out scenarios by Ambag. When taking a closer look, VMT growth is really going to be driven by those future growth areas again. Overall, this is relatively encouraging, but we'll still look at options for bringing our overall numbers down. And while we can't use congestion metrics for measuring environmental impacts under CEQA, no one likes to be stuck in traffic, so we're still looking at capacity. There are limited opportunities for expanding existing roads that will still be included, but we really need multimodal shift to improve capacity, which will only get more limited as we grow. In 1980, Salinas was 80,000 people. It's 160,000 today. Projected to go to 175, so it's undergone a rapid period of growth and is still increasing. It's not a small town anymore, though it still has that small-town feel. So what are the options then? This stuff makes VMT mitigation through environmental review and TFO very important. Instead of funding wider roads, a lot of this stuff will go to things like infrastructure, bike lanes that will come out of like the active transportation plan, working with MST to improve transit frequency, infrastructure, et cetera, as well as other travel demand measures, carpooling, van pooling incentives, things like that. Similar to land use and infrastructure, we have three broad goals in the circulation element. The first one, provide a maintained, safe, integrated circulation system that meets the needs of current and future needs of the community for all mode of travel. And here you have policies like implementing the Vision Zero Action Plan that the city adopted a couple of years ago. There are safety measures in improving that congestion and connectivity. Goal two is really about that reduction in single occupancy vehicles, reducing vehicle miles traveled, increasing those modes of transit that are healthy, sustainable. Goal three is supporting local economy through a circulation system that moves products safely So a little about the runway here ahead of us. We're still hoping for some open house and other activities this spring. Some of that is dependent on some data we've been waiting on from our water purveyor friends to get to the point where we can have another climate action plan webinar. We did this study session with council last month, and we have at least two more coming up before June. The next one will be public safety and environmental justice, and then we have the economic development element. So we have two more on the way, and we're still planning for a draft general plan for public review released by the end of June, with the draft environmental impact report and CAP coming later in the summer. They'll have a 45-day comment period, and after those comments are received, we can start the process of actually bringing that formally before the Planning Commission for official review. So this isn't just a, we want to bring you along because we like you, you're officially a part of this legal process. And during that process, the comment period, the draft review period, there'll be other opportunities for additional public engagement as we go forward. So that concludes my presentation, and turn it back over to you.
Thank you so much. Are there any questions from the Commissioners to Mr. Moore regarding this presentation? Commissioner Donahue.
Two. The reference to the Alisal marketplace, is that, it looks like it does, but does that basically preserve the, for lack of a better word, geography that was envisioned the last time that that project was teed up? Basically the same area?
Yeah, yeah. And I'll zoom back there, but yes, basically that was kind of like, okay, we are carrying forward this, it's kind of in the middle there, and on the left is the green square in the center circle, or triangle thing. Yeah, those were kind of the boundaries of that proposed development proposal. We kind of revetted that through the Alisal property plan process. People said they were so interested in that as a kind of a redevelopment area, long-term, seeing some new stuff there between the downtown, the Alisal, reconnecting those things. And some of the precursors for that to happen, even in that original proposal, were the new police station and the transportation moving.
Right.
Those have happened now, so keep that while rolling forward. It is one of the areas where there are still a lot of active businesses and users, so that was one of the areas where the non-conforming questions really came up. And again, especially with such fractured property ownership, a big move is not really in the table or feasible. It's, you know, it's going to probably be a smaller change over time, but, you know.
But same, 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 same general area. The other question I have, it's a little tongue-in-cheek, but just maybe make a point or ask a question. So I noticed the desire to get down vehicle, you know, miles traveled, so is, does an economic consideration accompany that, you know, when, when last I left any scrutiny of MST, so I'm dating myself, that wasn't necessarily profitable, which I'm all on board with, hey, you know, we need to be providing services too. So I don't think that's the ultimate measurement on everything cities or counties do, but, but I think people can, might agree, lots of bike lanes, but I'm not seeing any new bike shops opening or more bike riders. So when you do a general plan update and say that's the objective, you know, is that happening in a vacuum? Are there cost considerations? It's not necessarily the city's job to do that. On the other hand, it's not necessarily the city's job to say, everybody should get out of their car, you know, because people either vote with their feet or their cars, the case may be. I mean, I'm just, just curious, how does that, that factor in when you present, present this to council? I mean, they can do whatever they want, of course, but...
Yeah, and definitely you have to weigh both sides. So the CEQA impact changes, I mean, we have to look at that from that lens, but you can still look at congestion and stuff from the planning side. It still includes some of that in your development fee stuff too, but do you want to start charging people for too many different things too? Then that'll really increase costs in that area. And to the MST point, it is a bit of a new territory because we don't directly provide transit. They do, so it's kind of a, this is going to make cities and their transit agencies have a, hopefully a closer relationship to try to influence some of this stuff. Some of it might be as simple as saying as a development comes in and says, okay, I need to mitigate X number of trips, so I'm going to, I'm going to include, I'm going to pay for my residents to have transit passes for X amount of time.
Though the other thing you're implying is that as a city, you've got to also accommodate whatever the state is saying too, in terms of pulling together a game plan. It sounds like that's part of the, part of the deal.
Part of it, and just for, for general projects to be approved. They get sued on CEQA rounds, we say, you're fine, but the state will probably say, no, you're not, you're not fine.
All right, I got it.
And with things like bike lanes and stuff, you know, we, as I said, we have that, our active transportation plan happening too, and we know that both sides are always looking at, okay, here's an ideal scenario, what would that do to congestion though? If we just put in bike lanes all over here, that's going to choke everything up, so there's a balancing act we're trying to carry out.
Well, as you know, not everyone's equally excited about all the bike lanes in downtown Salinas, and I freely admit it's not horrible to, it's not the worst thing in the world to have to say, sit two clicks of the dial to get, you know, across, you know, across Main Street. On the, on the, on the other hand, you know, it's a subject of conversation.
Yes, definitely, but the point of some, if, if you don't have a robust and safe network, there's not much incentive for people to use it. So it's a little bit, hopefully build something better, some will come.
Okay.
But it is always a balancing act, and there are places that put in projects that have had to take them out, costing a lot of political goodwill money. So we're aware of these things, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any questions or comments, Commissioner Meeks?
I have a couple, no questions, but I have a couple of comments. I share the same concern as Dennis about the bicycle lanes, but other than that, I think we need to be careful about our multi-use projects. There's so many that, let's go back in the back ways. When Tynan was first built, nobody moved in downstairs. Finally got something in there, but the people upstairs, where's the nearest grocery store? Really wasn't well done. I think the West, although I'm really not for it, I think it'll work there because you've got a closed community. But then, it's just, that's what I'm saying, we just, we've got to be careful because the people are not filling the ground floors. Maybe we should just make them all housing, you know, look at each one individually.
And so, even under current mixed use, people can do that. So even the mixed-use zone, I think a common misconception is that it has to be a vertical mixed-use project, and it doesn't. We've gotten comments from folks that've said, hey, be careful of your mixed-use zones because we're having trouble filling retail first floors. And it's like, well, okay, you don't have to do that now, but we will keep that in mind, so, especially outside of the downtown and Main Street, requirements might be different. And I think now, in the current code, there are requirements, there are incentives for people to do those ground floor retail things, but, and we know in Monterey, they've had problems on Lighthouse, so yes, that definitely is a valid concern about filling retail on ground floors.
Yeah, like I said, I'm pretty sure the Western expansion will work because of the community that will be there, if they got the groceries and stuff that you are planning. But I mean, look at Abbott Street. You know, it's, they're vacant, so I don't know, just something to keep in mind. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Meeks. Any questions or comments, Commissioner McKelvey Day?
I guess I have a question, just to help me better understand. So on the land use, at what point do, does everything, as far as like you're saying, Or I know you're looking at, you know, how we're traveling through the city, but the impact of those things that are added to the surrounding areas? Like, when does it come into play? Like, is a decision being made here, this is what we want, decision over here, this is what we want? At what point do, are they considered for each other?
At some level, they're kind of considered in this process. They're also kind of considered again with the zoning code amendment process. And this is another area where the state has put in some more limitations on places now, putting limits on parking requirements on certain residential projects, things like that. But, yeah, it is still a balance. It does come back to, again, we think that especially in fill and stuff, other areas, if you want to make places for people, you have to allow that to happen. So that's really what this is about, encouraging. In some places, that might need a little more difficulty with parking as things adjust, but it's, there are trade-offs, and there are always challenges probably with what the state has put in place as far as those limitations on parking requirements. We do need to increase those other options so that it becomes more feasible, and it's not just, it's one thing to eliminate some of these requirements, right, and not have any assistance in increasing transit service, so those other options, because then we are just stuck in a situation where people still have to use the car. It's not even an option. And we're in situations like we are now where there's a lot of overcrowded and parking unavailability because things are so expensive, people are living multiple through a unit, and nothing was designed for that kind of parking situation or et cetera impacts to the neighborhood.
I understand it's a balancing act, and I think that's why when I see the pathways, when you went into the next section, like for Baronda Road is an easy example, that we just didn't support the traffic, you know, at the time of the planning, and leave ourselves with, you know, that option of, we know we don't need it now, but the potential for what we're doing with all this new development, we only have one access to get to the freeway, people are going to need to commute, get across town, whatever it is, and then we have the situation we have now. You know, and I feel like a few things that we've had come across from us, we're having to approve, and then we ask things like that, like traffic studies, and they're, oh, that'll happen down the line once you approve, but if we were to see that information, maybe we'd be making a different decision, you know, because we're not seeing those impacts. That's my concern.
There are traffic impact studies now for this, I think it's, it's lower, but I mean, like this, in a presentation like this map, the left shows basically congestion at this point. So 2019 and 2040, if nothing's happened besides increase in development, build out. You see the other, other areas turn yellow, some turn red. So you do see that capacity challenge happening. And then, as I said, individually, projects that come before you, that have disruptionary review, a lot of them should have traffic studies, some may not under SEQA, because it might be a SEQA requirement, they might be able to get out of that if it's a small enough project, or if they're in the way to find, excuse me, to find an exemption. I don't know if I answered your question, so.
I guess I'm, yeah, I'm more giving some input too, that, you know, how can we, if this is, we're doing the general plan, and again, we're dealing with things, decisions that were made 30 years ago, you know, what are, what are we doing to plan for the future at the same time, or at least input some kind of tools that we can use as we hit those, you know, milestones, which we should assume by past, you know, what practices and then what's happened, you know, that we, we at one point should be getting better, you know? Then how can we implement things that will be in place for future, you know, councillor, whomever else is making the decisions?
I think it comes back to your implementation tools too, so things like the zoning code, things like the, the traffic fee ordinance and identifying projects in that to invest in. And Baronda Road is a good example because there's supposed to be improvements to it, and even in the West area and Centuary, they're supposed to pay into improving and expanding that road. It just hasn't quite happened yet, and the longer it waits, the higher those construction costs go. So some of that stuff, there are options or were options, and they haven't happened yet, but I think that kind of goes, yeah, into the traffic fee ordinance, the programs that will be worked together on what they're going to invest in, build. So it goes even beyond just the general plan policy level.
Okay, and then I have one, kind of a minor question. When you had the information that went out about the non-conforming?
Mm-hmm.
So if, so you said if the owner makes a change, what if it's just a business tenant, and let's say auto shop, but they're no longer going to be in that area, and another tenant auto shop wants to go in there? The owner's not changing the use, would it still stay like grandfathered in?
As I understand, yes, it would, continuous use, it can sell.
That's all my questions.
Thank you.
Any questions or comments, Commissioner Ramos?
No, those were great questions, and no further questions for me.
I guess similar, part of what I, I heard Commissioner McCulley Day making a few requests, and one is maybe something similar to what we've talked about in the Steering Committee, which is to be able to see through this process, see the plans lined up with each other, since there are so many interconnections. And so the, the one that I think is really relevant to land use is around economic development, and it would be great at some point to be able to see those two together. And another comment I have is just gratitude to the good work that the staff has done on this, and you can see the input from the Steering Committee integrated into this, this plan, so that's exciting, and thank you for that. And I just had a couple clarifying based on that. So I think I heard you say there will, it's not feasible to do the road, a vehicular road through Car Lake?
At this moment, yes. If bodies are pushed to look back at it, we can, but it just, the cost again is, would be very prohibitive.
And so instead of focus on trails and bike paths and stuff?
Yeah.
Great.
And a lot of these things, like you can get grant funding to construct trails and stuff too, but it's hard to do that for new roads these days. And I think that's, kind of ties back to, we've had a lot of trouble getting just the money to do the Baronda project. That's been in the works for so long. To do major new roads, it's only, I think, going to be, continue to be a struggle to get funding for that.
Got it. And then with the, that first chart, the areas of use change, is that mainly adding the Alisal marketplace piece? Is that the, I was trying to understand the major changes here.
This picture or the?
Yeah.
Yeah, so sorry, the blue circles, and we've actually got some requests, changed a couple of things that are in here, but yeah, so the, I guess top to bottom, the one around the middle of the city, it's Marketplace, East Market, East Alisal. One thing that the Planning Commission dealt with is, we have these, these zoning overlays, we have focus scope overlays, we have a lot of different acronyms in areas, and we certainly will still have a lot of those going forward, but we're trying to simplify some things. So there's like, for example, there's a focus scope, there are overlays over the downtown, and there are overlays over East Market, East Alisal. So what, the place I tried, trying to try to do is say, okay, here are the overlays, broadly, we're just going to make this use kind of align, so we can hopefully simplify that in the zoning code. On West Market, it's on the south side of the street, moving kind of from, from strict industrial, there's some lighter industrial kind of stuff, but still pretty similar. And some of the bigger, the little circles were around some of the shopping centers that were the subject of those SB2 rezones. Their place type would be mixed use village, which is a mixed use designation, is kind of specifically targeted at larger lot sites. Mixed use corridor, more corridor streets downtown, fine grain stuff, mixed use site, mixed use village, think Creek Bridge, Creek Bridge Village, is kind of more of a planned big development. You have a, you have a grocery store, it has some apartments, has a little, a mix of horizontal and vertical uses. We've changed back the Sears and the former Kmart and Alviatra to commercial retail. And they're thinking, those were kind of on that path because they were vacant, now they're not vacant, so, so that's what those circles are about. And like I said, there are some levels of change really throughout the map, but those are the biggest.
And the ones in East Salinas, those are in alignment with what came out of the Alisal vibrancy plan?
Yeah, those are kind of aligned with that too. So this looked at the economic development element, downtown vibrancy plan, Alisal vibrancy plan, and the Chinatown revitalization plan, and tries to take those recommendations into the land use plan.
Great. Yeah, just one of the, where it would be nice to see the economic element with, with this, with the land use, things like policy LUI-1.6, promote economic development through focus, and then creating specific plans for Alisal Marketplace and just, you know, making sure that current small business owners are a part of that, and that that work benefits them. And I don't know if it makes sense to name any of that here, or if that's more in the economic element, but.
I think we might have taken that policy out in the draft, because it's a specific plan requirement, but I think in zoning code changes and any area planning, we would certainly want to include that business community.
Great, great. That's all my questions. We'll open it up now for public comment. Are there any comments from the public regarding this item? And thank you, thank you for coming, if you have any, any comments on the land use or circulation update. This will be the time.
I just have one question about.
You can go ahead and come on up to the mic if you don't mind.
What is, a curiosity, the gray part? What, why, why is it, what is it? I mean.
Good question.
Over here, it's yellow, which I guess means residential, and now it's gray. What does that mean?
The gray, in this case, just means there are place sites specifically for the West and Central areas that defer to those specific plans. So because those specific plans were just adopted, it basically just says, look back at those documents. So if we did an underlying place type map, it will look similar to what's on the right, similar colors, but it's just saying, continue to use those documents going forward, just so as they're in between things.
And that's the West area?
Central.
And the central, what are the last two letter SP?
CASM, yeah, specific plan.
Specific plan, okay, great.
Yeah, West and Central specific plan, and we are working on the East area specific plan, that process starts. So we are using the place types for that. That's why the eastern portion up there is still multicolored. But yeah.
Are there any additional questions or comments from the commissioners to Mr. Moore? Commissioner Donahue?
No questions.
Commissioner Meeks?
No questions.
Commissioner McCulley Day?
No questions, but thank you for all the hard work, and looking forward to when it continues to move forward.
Commissioner Ramos?
No questions.
And no additional questions for me. Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Looks like we have no public hearings. Other business, general plan, Steering Committee update.
So the Steering Committee will be reconvening next week, and so they will be reviewing the introductory chapters, which were just shared today, chapters one, two, and three, which look at introduction, our guiding principles, the vision, community profile, demographics, et cetera. And so we'll be reconvening and reviewing that. It's a rough draft, seeking input, and we will then be continuing with our study sessions, as mentioned before, through the Planning Commission and the City Council.
Great, thank you. Are there any follow-up reports?
None.
Future agenda items?
I have one of those. May 1st, the location is 1 and 3 Bridge Street. Some people refer to it as mini storage. In our code, it's slightly different, but it's a mini storage project with a variance.
If we could get just a show of hands, who will be able to attend on May 1st?
I should be able to.
Commissioner Ramos is checking calendar?
Yes.
All right, so we should have quorum. And with that, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you all.
Thanks.